Okay, there's no agenda adjustments this evening. And this meeting is being audiotaped. We're going to go into the public hearing on the school choice matter. So I'll entertain a motion to suspend the regular meeting and open a public hearing on school choice.
Make a motion.
Twenty-one, twenty-two. Motion by Rockland. Second by?
I'll second.
Whitman. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Are there any school choice comments from the public or the committee?
Yes, I would like. I know that South Shore Regional School District not participate in the school choice for the school year twenty-one, twenty-two. The school district has established process for admitting students who reside outside the school district.
I'll second that motion.
Citu with second. Any discussion on the matter? All those in favor of the motion? Unanimous. Motion carries. I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing and return to the regular meeting. Hanson, second. Citu with second. Any discussion on going back to the regular meeting? All those in favor? Again, unanimous. Motion carries. Okay. Approve the minutes. I'll ask for a motion to approve the set of minutes. Abington?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous again, motion carries. Studer up to fifty yet? Yeah, okay, if she comes, we'll jump back. Any reports? Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your package, you have the Treasury report for the month of April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. You have some co-op jobs on the cover posted on Facebook for the science works. The Dr. Forchus, the warning company to support some of our students. So I get to be part of all these pictures on the front page for the report. First page is our cash balances again. Everything's going smoothly through the end of April. Two million dollars in the bank. At the bottom, you have eight hundred twenty-six thousand dollars in the OPE account. Again, we make a transfer every year from our budget into our OPE account to continue to grow that fund for some future needs. Second page is our revenue. For our assessments, we did get the check from Whitman, four hundred five thousand dollars. During the first month, we also got our chapter seventy-eight, some interest and a couple of miscellaneous items. Overall, we had about seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in income for the month. Everything else is going well. We have all of our, the bottom of the added district tuitions, all of our added district towns have paid their tuition for this year. So everything's going well, no problems for all that. The final pages are expenditures. For the month, eight hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars, the bottom line number, which is payroll, six hundred eighty-four thousand is the majority of those numbers. Again, second highest expense every month is health insurance. Everything else is going along as scheduled, and I'll talk about that more in a second. But overall, we're on target. We have no budget transfers this month. Everything is within the confines of what the budget was expected to be. So things are going well.
Motion to accept the Secretary at Treasury report from Cohasset?
Second, Rock.
Rock, a second, Rockland. Any discussion on the Treasury report?
Did Noel pay, Jim?
Actually, I don't think Noel, there were some problems with Donna. Tricia's been in contact with Donna over there. So yes, I think they've been, they paid so far in, in May for the balances at all. There's problems with the emails of the reports. So I know that Tricia emailed them over the other day.
Have them let me know because I'll see the town manager in the morning or the next morning, and we'll make sure it's. John is leaving, so.
Okay. Any other discussion? Thank you, Rock. All those in favor of the Treasury's report? Any opposed? No, seeing none? It's unanimous, motion carries. Jim, do you have anything else?
Yes, I do, a couple things. As we finish ten months of the fiscal year, we got management left over. We normally take a look at where we are from a budget standpoint, from both the hand and the expense side, and figure out if there would be possibly any surpluses projected towards the end of the year. Tom and I met with both Janine and Tricia, the four of us sat down about ten days ago, reviewed the numbers, reviewed the potential savings in our payroll line item, along with other line items as we go down the order. And we did come up with a, we do have a surplus projected through the end of the year. With that, Tom, as he does every year, will put together a list of requests that we'll normally vote on and buy for some sort of, you know, basically projects and so forth. So we're, again, as we go through the month of May and then just into June, we'll update that with our expected surplus number. So just to let you know that we're working on it. And we try to figure out how to, how to deal with any potential surpluses.
Okay? Very good.
The second piece is that we had a visit last month from Martin Domeno, who is the Department of Revenue's Division of Local Services representative that covers our school district. Martin's been dealing with the social go-tack for many, many years. He visited with Tom Gilchrist, who's a supervisor. And then we sat down, we did all the excess and deficiency calculations that we do every year. So that was processed, everything paperwork was in fine order. They processed our excess and deficiency, but below the allowable threshold. We're allowed to keep five percent of our assessments for the year, our budget for the year. And where that's in the seven hundred thousand range, and our E and D is in the mid-five hundred thousand range. You probably all got an email because when they pressed the button to send an email up confirming our excess and deficiency, I think it sent it to like. So everybody in your town got it. Your town managers, your board selectmen, your finance committees. If the dog catcher in your town possibly also got a copy of it. But everybody got a copy of the E and D. And we're, we're good for another year, we're in good shape from that standpoint. And we just, you know, another thing in the books, and we'll do it again next year.
That's what I do.
That's it.
Okay, very good. Chairman, I have nothing to say except that union negotiations are ongoing. We're plugging along at it, both Unit A and Unit B. It's a process. It's a little different this year because everything's on Zoom. So we're getting at it. So that's in process. Superintendent Director, Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very briefly tonight, members of the committee, somewhat anticlimactic, as you know, the situation with your, with your communities. We, as of this date, have five of our eight communities who have approved the budget assessment for fiscal twenty-two. We have on Monday night, May twenty-fourth, town meetings in both Cohasset and Abington. And then on June second, we will have Whitman's town meeting, that will be the eighth town meeting. This ties in with the next item, which is the debt authorization article update, similar story. At all, at the town meetings, both our budget number and our debt authorization article are matters of business in front of the towns. I appreciate all the committee members' hard work on this. And we will also be seeking to get approval at our remaining three communities. So by June second, we will have had our final town meeting, and hopefully we'll be able to report a favorable position after, after the final town meeting. The next item on the agenda deals with the return to school waiver. Maybe some of you may have seen this in passing. It was in at least the news cycle when, when the state announced which districts were granted waivers. Again, not, somewhat anticlimactic that we've been talking about this. But essentially, we got, we got approval after having had a site visit from the Department of Education that we can continue as we are for the remainder of this school year, which can now be very easily interpreted as kids are in school eight days out of ten. They're in every shop day, and they're in three days a week out of five for their academic week. We're pushing the envelope a little bit as we have space to do so. So for instance, starting on Monday, we will have kids returning to full days of instruction. There'll be no more staggered start in the morning. So it's seven forty start for everybody, whether they're in person in shop, they're in person in academics, or it might be one of those two days where they might be home. The day starts at seven forty as we, as we move our returning school kids back to as close to a normal schedule as possible. When our seniors are, are signed out, the next possible day of school, which will be June first, that day will begin, and for the rest of the school year, for our ninth graders, they will be in school every day, full days, because there's added capacity on the, on the academic and shop, on the academic week, because the seniors are, are no longer here. So the waiver was granted, the waiver is only good through the end of the school year. And our plan, you know, the administrators and the guidance counselors did a lot of good work to get us to the point that we can say with confidence that we will have a schedule that will look a lot more like a normal year for September. We won't have kids in one classroom all day with the teachers moving. We will have classes, bells ringing, kids in the halls, et cetera. So we're planning for that. We're planning for September with the assumption that there is still some sort of distancing between kids, three-foot distancing. And so we will be open, we will not need to seek any modifications for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So we're all very proud of how much in-person time we've been able to give our kids this year, and everybody has been rolling in the same direction to make that happen. And it's nice to know that we'll have a plan in place to welcome all of, all of the new faces. I guess everyone will have a new face if there's no mask on. But certainly for those rising ninth graders, there's, it'll, it'll be nice to see some of the hallmarks of a, of a normal, a normal school year. The other thing I'll point out to you before I turn over to the administrators, and this is just happening in real time, just within the last, you know, within the last day or so, that there have been modifications made for masks, okay? I can tell you that with everything that you've probably already seen in your news feeds, indoor mask wearing in schools is still required, I expect that's going to continue. But outdoor mask wearing for students, ports, recess, physical education, shops who are working outside, that is no longer a requirement. And so we're in the process right now of putting together communications that would go out to families to alert them to that. So that's, that's definitely progress toward a more normal situation. One of the gray areas there that, it's kind of, it's the medical community, the State Department of Education, it takes a little while for them all to catch up with one another. They have not said, they haven't said exactly and clearly that the outdoor mask removal also applies to adults. So, so right now, on paper, it's, the kids can do X, Y, and Z, no masks outside. But they haven't yet officially said that for adults. So the key point is that we want to make sure our teachers, especially our shop teachers, are aware of this adjustment, that we have a consistent implementation of it. And then that's how we can enjoy going into the, to the rest of the year. If an academic teacher, you know, wants to take a group of kids outside, those, those same rules will apply. There have also been some adjustments that will, that will be forthcoming and will get a little more attention. Just earlier today, there'll be published state guidance on graduation. So they, again, with everything trending in a positive direction, they will, they will relax and no longer require masks at graduation. And they will still encourage unvaccinated folks to have masks. But needless to say, when we get and digest that guidance from the Department of Education, we'll communicate with families from the class of two thousand twenty-one in the hopes that, again, I think of all, all positive adjustments. So we're reacting as quickly as we can with information that's coming out. But based on the data, those, those two signature items are positive developments. So I'll keep you informed if something else adjusts.
Tom, do we have, will we, will we be installing those tents for our possibly, for outside classroom stuff?
We're not, we, we determined that for classroom purposes, we don't, we won't have any need of them. So kids can go outside for lunch, certainly they have, they'll have that option. We have kids outside every day. But fortunately, our capacity is such that we're not going to, we're not going to need to do that. So, and those tents are ours, so we'll be, we'll be, we'll be making, we'll be making good use of them in the long term. Any other questions on that state guidance just before I pivot over to, I'll turn it over to Mark and Sandy for any administrator updates.
Okay, so you have in your final document five, school improvement plan for this year. I'd just like to get some highlights, if you want to follow along with me, or have questions, or whatever you want. So what are my goals for this year? Was to really repress this group. It had been a few of the same people for a number of years to a break. They would be what we call legacy parents, who have been here for multiple years of multiple students. But I wanted to bring in some fresh blood, bring in some new ideas. I was, I feel like I was very successful in that. We had a very robust group of people, and I think, like many things we've learned, Zoom helped me to get more people involved. So we had fourteen people who would meet every first Monday of the month and talk about school issues and visions and what they saw for the school and that type of stuff. So having the Zoom meeting really helped because not all of them, a lot of them had younger children, we know, and it's time for them to get to the school and do that type of thing. So the Zoom option really was helpful with that. Two things I kind of could pull out of the school improvement plan for this year. The first one is communication. We do a really, really, and I think you guys would recognize that, really strong job communicating with our families about what was going on, what they could expect for us. But I had a number of ninth grade parents who obviously went through a different year this year, and they were able to pinpoint some things that they felt we needed to work on, which they felt was good for us to hear. So if we're looking at, if you wanted this kind of all along, they, they proposed doing the Zoom meetings because it was beneficial to the families who could be at home with little ones running around or putting little ones to bed and not having to worry about being at school or whatever. But they wanted to see a series of different meetings. One of them is the obvious school rule. We never really did that with the parents last year. It wasn't on purpose or anything like that, but we didn't talk about no hats in the building. We didn't talk about, you know, those kinds of things going on, how the tension works, transportation works, any of that type of stuff. One of the things they didn't pull out, and they said they would like it separately, which I can understand it. And you heard it from Tom, Sammy and I for another year, how we grade. We do it, we do it differently. We have the achievement grade of how well you did something, and then we have the work ethic grade of how much, how much effort you put into it, how well you work with your cohort team and things like that. So they would like us to break that down to a separate meeting, which I think is a great idea. I think we could talk about our grading philosophy with parents, and have them understand why we do this. So that was another one that they really, the parents pushed that idea. Then there's other things they talked about, co-op. We, we are having an extraordinary year in co-op. I'm not going to tell you the number, I'll leave that to Sandy, but that's what we call a T. We're having the best year we've ever had in co-op in this building. The students have bought into the idea, and the teachers and the parents. But we do a great job educating the kids about what co-op is. The parents would like a separate meeting when they're in the junior year beginning to describe the co-op process, how it works, what they can expect, what the relationships are, that type of thing. So that's another one we're going to do. And they kind of tie that in, they want to have a career pathway with our guidance department. You know, not only for those kids that are going to college, we do that, but also to talk about what if my student is going into the military? Or what if my student has eyes on a career? What do I need to be on the lookout for? So these are all things that the parents brought up themselves, were very pushy, not pushy, but they pushed that agenda very well. And then the other one that we've already started is recruitment materials. They'd like to see a, an archive of videos from the shops themselves that could be posted to the website, that people could go and view and see what's going on there, and be able to use that as a selling tool to understand what goes on in manufacturing, engineering, technology. What does it look like in there? You know, what do they do in horticulture beyond taking care of the lawn? What does that look like? So use those as tools, because a lot of them said it was great that the kids went through exploratory, got to experience all these things, but I didn't really understand what the kid, my child was doing. So they just weren't able to give us some thought when we are missing communication gaps where we could easily fill in with stuff that we have. So it's very beneficial. The other one is well-rounded citizens, and turning out a well-rounded citizen. So they, they want to see a community service program where students have to do so many hours a year. A lot of high schools have those. They would like us to implement one as well. So we're going to have a research committee to look at that this year. They would like to see a student mentoring program, if we're younger and older students, so they could help them through the building, help them to be adjusted to the shop, things like that. One of them, one of the young freshmen, who I have a feeling you'll see as you do here sitting next to me, very, very bright, articulate young woman, Andrea Fernandez, she would like to see a, a savings account for students. Not a fees, I kind of mentioned this to Mr. Copeland before, but a place where students can put money so that when their senior year comes along, they have money to pay for that ninety-five dollar yearbook and pay for that sixty. They have senior year between tuxedos and dresses and hair, and there's a lot of money that goes out of the house in that two months. They would like to see the kids be able to pay into something that they could then take away. So that's something that this young woman, whom you will see in the future, very, very excited about her. She came up with this one on her own. The other one that we've talked about before is the super service learning trip. Some of the parents would like to see us go out and get union sponsorship to help pay for some of that, which I think is a great idea. So we're going to start working with Mr. Bello to see if we could find sponsorships when we can start going back to Houston, or to New Jersey, or wherever we're going, and have the unions pay a little bit of the cost for us, so it's not on the students or on the district to take over those things. That's all I have to do. Does anybody have any questions? You have the document in front of you, willing to answer anything, or clarify anything you're unsure about?
Anyone? Okay. Thank you, thank you.
I'm going to go over to Sandy.
I think we got to do a motion to approve.
Oh, yes, you do, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
Okay, by Noel, second by? Cohasset. Any discussion on the school improvement plan? Seeing none, all in favor? I oppose. Unanimous. Motion carries. Sandy?
Hi, everyone. I get to, I feel good to tell you about some of the great things that are happening at campus. I'll start with a nod to Jim and Mark and tell you that we had a hundred and thirty-five students in our co-op program, a hundred and twenty-three, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars rest part, and thirty-five thousand hours of the. We're excited about that. I want to talk to you a little bit about some of the curricular things that are just so normal, but so exciting. We had a credit for life fair, it was virtual, and I want to thank the Rockland Trust for being our guide. We have a virtual fair built by a consortium of South Shore banks, area banks. It was excellent, did a great job. We will definitely be making that a part of our educational curriculum in our school in the future. We have had two great opportunities to do some of that communication, mark Spoh, by meeting with new, new students and parents. So our incoming freshman for the class of two thousand twenty-five, we have a session left to meet with them in the area. Learn about our school and our schedule and our process. Help them identify student contact and make up these. We have two student support initiatives that we're thankful for. I'm thankful for Saturday School, our third installment, where we have started thirty students on a Saturday in May, supported by some excellent teachers, some directed interventions to help students afterwards. Been a, a hard year for students and a high profile. And those students who continue to struggle will be invited to an extended school year rather than automatic failure. We'll invite the right students to extend their school year by eight days in the hope to get them through their school year. So a couple of initiatives going on, projects. Coventry is building a handicap ramp for the town in Norwell. And the vertical landscape program is looking on the waiver entrance by the new ticket, which will help people to enjoy. I do have a few more things to add, please, I want to talk tonight, I have a lot of visuals. So thank you for being attentive after a long day. Some co-herding things, some things that go along with our programs of study. A great thank you to our graphics department for a really nice senior art show last week, where they showcased their nine seniors and their personalized artwork for display. You should see some of that on our Facebook page soon. Skills USA, we do, we do it every year, and we did it even again this year, and we had some really, really great results in mobile robotics technology, screen detecting, world-based sculpture, second place was Corey Lawson on a really fantastic album there. We won a team community service award and a number one in gold in pin design for the national logo. In the horticulture, in a program that is graduating their first seven seniors this year, in a virtual FFA, took third place in agricultural sales, third place in floral, this is statewide, third place in floral, floral flying. They took already two awards in hard state design, an award in the nursery and landscape, two awards in turf ID, second and a third, first place in their team demonstrations, and a number one in the state for individual demonstration by none other than our big Ryan, our, our committee, a student representative to the school committee. So pretty impressive. Says a lot about our students and our faculty. I'll wrap up with those are a couple other highlights, our active, the plugs, where our yearbook is done, it's ready for distribution. I think it went out this afternoon to.
Tomorrow.
Friday. We had another theater production with a story production presented in April. So our Javelin Club Theater Guild has done a great job keeping active. Student Council did a fantastic job just last week, working under shop, shop spirit displays. Hopefully continues next year, and our cosmetology department won that shop spirit award. Putting together a visual display that showcased what it meant to be a student at South Shore Tech, and their work was highlighting their technical skill, but also the diversity of our school, a really meaningful job. Sports, everything's active, baseball, softball, girls' sports, track and field, even wrestling is underway. So it's really wonderful to see campus vibrant again. Junior events, next week is the last week for academics for seniors. Following week, we've got a field day on May twenty-seventh. Please join us for the barbecue at eleven-thirty at the snack shack. Junior sign up, it's on the twenty-eighth, graduation in Marshall, it's a four. Back to normal, folks. That's all for me. Happy to take questions to be coming.
Anyone? Thank you, Sandy.
Can I just add, I know if this Ross says everybody something, if you could reply to her that if you're coming to graduation, not, so I can find the proper seating. Appreciate that.
I'll be there. Where are we going to have graduations?
Football field, not that.
Okay. Is that on work day?
June fifth, ten a.m., because it will not rain.
Will not.
It'll be June sixth at two o'clock.
That's a Saturday.
That is a Saturday.
That is a Saturday.
Earlier, the design is still in motion, it's fluid because of different directions we're getting from states. Hope to have something left to.
Hope to have some lots of fans next week early.
Yeah, that's one thing we've learned during this, is be fluid.
I also like to give them, compliment the, sort of, a couple of things. But I think the facility, the school facility looks great. All the lines look great. I just think they do a great job here with those three instructors that we have. It's a great program.
Yep, I agree. I was out there looking at the walkway, the building. Great work. Incredible. All right, school calendar. Tom, do you have any comments on that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just briefly, for your review and for action at our next meeting in June, it's a draft of next year's calendar. Between now and next month, we'll have a slight adjustment to include teacher professional development days. But the recommendation will be to bring you a calendar that has a first day of school starting on August 31st. Another important feature that we'll be hopefully making a decision on would be selecting the date of our open house as we reevaluate the need for in-person recruitment and finding a Saturday in the fall as we have it passed. So that'll be on June's agenda.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Okay, we have a donation from Lyndon Pons for, it's in your packet, but they're donating $3,699 to cover the cost of a crisis prevention intervention instructor training. This will allow social ethics teachers to become certified as instructors as well poised to educate and prepare students for the world, real world scenarios and experiences. Do I have a motion to accept that donation? Cituit, second by. Hanson. Any discussion on that?
I have one comment, Bob.
Go ahead, Bobby.
Do we have, still have one of our ex-students there as the, I think she was the restaurant manager or something? To your knowledge, or Tom?
How long ago are you thinking? Just in the last few years?
Five years.
I can find out who that is, but I don't off the top of my head.
I know she went, there was a restaurant manager, so. Just, just a comment, that's all.
Any other discussion on the donation? Saying none? All those in favor? Anybody opposed? It's unanimous. Motion carries. Warrant, thank you. He does have one. I didn't see you pass those.
Cut me out of this, anyone?
No, I had you read the other thing. I didn't want to overburden you.
You want to nail them in. Warrants, 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 21, 21A, 22, 22A, and 22B totaling $1,8,756.13.
Second, second by Cituit. Any discussion on the warrants? Saying none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Any requests for action? Anyone? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Noel. All those in favor? Anyone opposed?
Wouldn't have changed it anyway.
That's right. Okay, motion carries. We are adjourned.